Which honors former employees who have made a lasting impact on our students. They include Kathy Angelo, Barbara Barrier, Chris Frye, and Shirley Seidel. The Wall of Fame recipients and the twelve teachers and staff who have retired this year will be honored tomorrow, Wednesday, May twenty eighth, at the MCAS MCEA Retirement Dinner. Access, La Porte County's video recording of the ceremony will be available after the event. On Thursday, May twenty ninth, Michigan City Area Schools will honor seventy-seven adult education graduates who have earned their high school equivalency diplomas. Thirty-two of these students have opted to participate in this year's adult education commencement ceremony, which will be held at six P M. at Elston in the Hope Craft Performing Arts Center. I'd like to also recognize the outstanding performance of our boys volleyball team this season. Emmanuel Sanchez led the state in digs during the regular season, an incredible accomplishment. Mark Mills ranked twelfth in the state for SIS, and Russell Sabando was nineteenth in the state for digs. The team finished with fourteen wins this season, which is the most in team history, including, and most importantly, beating La Porte all three times they played in this year. Michigan City Area Schools will host kindergarten enrollment day on Tuesday, June third, two thousand twenty-five, from twelve to three P M. at the MCS Administration Building. This event offers families a convenient location to complete the enrollment process for incoming kindergarten students. During the event, families will have the opportunity to sign up for kindergarten, submit required documents, receive assistance with school placement, and connect with school staff for additional support. Please remember to bring the following documents: a parent guardian ID, proof of residency, emergency contact information, and legal paperwork if needed. This is an excellent chance for families to receive all the necessary support as they prepare for the upcoming school year. Join us for the Little Wolves Early Learning Center Open House and Enrollment Support Day on June eleventh from eight to three P M. Families can tour the facility, meet our caring staff, and get help enrolling for the fall. I encourage everyone to support Michigan City Area Schools Board Secretary Jenny Lee Peterson, Citywide Athletic Director Ben Bachman, and Michigan City High School student Jeremiah Jones as they take on the competition in the Salvation Army Doughnut Eating Contest on Friday, June sixth, at the Blue Chip. The doors will open at nine, and the doughnut eating begins at ten. Tickets to support our contestants in the Salvation Army are ten dollars and will be available at the contest. And from what I hear, Ms. Peterson, you're gonna go for ten doughnuts this year, right? So, good luck to our Wolves who will be participating in that contest. The citywide back-to-school rally will be held on Saturday, August ninth, from eleven A M. to three P M. at Elston Guild Field. This event will once again feature a school supply, distribution, activities, exhibit booths, and more. More information, including about exhibiting, volunteering, and sponsoring, the rally is available at our district website. The last day at school for students will be this Thursday, May twenty ninth. And I would like to wish all of our students, staff, and families a restful and enjoyable summer. A reminder that summer school will begin on Wednesday, June fourth. Additional information about community camps and future Wolf Sports Camps is available on our district website. And finally, a reminder that the first day in the fall for students is Wednesday, August thirteenth. The Returning Student Update Form is available in Power School Portal now and will be available until July first. A complete calendar for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year is available on our website. And with that, to conclude my announcements for tonight, I'd like to honor one of our sixth-grade students who's here tonight with us from Joy, and I'd like for first, the Assistant Principal at Joy, Ms. Rebecca Sanders, Teacher Mrs. Rivera, and Mrs. Ochoa from Joy to come forward along with Selena Rivera. So, if all of you could come forward first before I announce the students standing, so just come on forward. You can stand right in front of the tables. And tonight, we are recognizing our sixth-grade student Michaela Anderson from Joy, so we'll turn it over to you.
On March sixth, the Michigan City Exchange Club Day in Court Recognition Program hosted a luncheon to recognize students who wrote a report on what they learned, observed, and what surprised them while visiting the Michigan City Courthouse. Joy Elementary School's sixth-grade students Vera Poston and Michaela Anderson were selected by their teachers, Mrs. Heather Ochoa, and myself, Mrs. Selena Rivera, to attend the luncheon. Honored Judge Ose selected one report for special recognition. We are delighted to announce Michaela Anderson was recognized for her excellent report and received a special recognition plaque from Honored Judge Ose and the Michigan City Mayor Angela Angie Nelson. Dorscher? Dorscher, yes, thank you.
Dear Honor Jamie M. Ose and Michigan City Court, thank you for letting our class visit the courtroom. By allowing our class to attend the court cases, I've learned a lot about how the court system operates and how to remain a responsible citizen in Michigan City, Indiana. During the field trip, I learned many things. You need to think before you act because actions have consequences. This court date really helped me see further into the adult world. This also made me think more about my choice of friends because some criminals are influenced by their friends and maybe had trauma from not being in the right environment growing up. This court date also made me see how privileged I am to have parents who care about me. Make sure I grow up with the right mind and make sure I don't grow up to be a felon. Some things I found surprising during the field trip was child molesting. This surprised me because I didn't think people still did those things. What I learned from that case was definitely to be aware of my surroundings and that it is not a safe world for a young girl or boy. When we first walked in, a guy had to pay fifty thousand dollars for a bail. I did not expect a bail to be that expensive. There was also this guy who hit his girlfriend in the head with a frying pan and tried to drown her with water. Then at the court date, he tried to make a sob story saying he needed to see his daughter this Christmas. I felt bad for him, but he should have thought about that before he did what he did. I'm going to stay a responsible citizen by not getting in trouble and staying in a good environment. I don't want to end up in jail. I want to travel and enjoy life. I don't want to walk around in a square for an hour every day. I will also make sure to be a very good and nice person so I don't have a bad reputation around town. I will also think before I act and be very smart with my words and choices. Thank you, Michigan City Court, for letting us visit. Sincerely, Michaela Anderson.
And that concludes the superintendent's announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCullough. Thank you, Michaela. Next, we will have our annual economic development update, Mr. Hulse.
Good evening. Great to be here to present my annual report. It's been a great partnership over ten years and counting. I take pleasure to come here every year. There's a lot of great things happening within the city, within the school system, and we want to see that continue because the school is a real integral part of what's happening in the community. We need to have families or children, so you're gonna have more school buildings and more programs. But also, our kids are a future workforce, they're future residents, and so a lot of things that are happening right now is planning for the future and building for the future. Can you get the full screen? Awesome. Tonight, I was gonna want to talk about some of the things going on in the city, and we can talk about how those things affect you, but the city is really growing. And if you haven't been out for a while, there's a lot of new projects under construction. This is who we are, our mission to grow the city's economic base, the years we play in and our vision. And I tell people, we are a partnership. There's five people in my office. We don't do everything. You see it happen in the city. We have great partners, i.e. school, city, it's going too fast. School, nonprofits, private sector developers, a lot of people are working with us to make these things happen. So, it doesn't happen by itself, but we are one of the partners to make these things happen. In terms of investment, the city is really seeing a lot of great investments. Over the past three years, over half a billion dollars, and all the type of people from a small city are really punching above our weight class. This is what typically happens in Fishers and Carmel. And so, a lot of folks don't stay too surprised at what's happening in Michigan City because very unusual for a city of this size to get this type of investment. But hopefully, we can keep this momentum going for another three or four years because you'll see the city change forever. And there's some things happening within the city and outside the city that's making these things happen. I want to show a few projects that have been completed. For those of you who drive around town, the old library, that's five luxury apartments. The old deli, that's now Airbnb and some retail. The Italian or the steakhouse, the French restaurant, two new additions toward downtown. We haven't been there lately. There are great places to hang out and great food, if you like French food. We have Health Link completed this project earlier this year. We love our chicken. There's always a chicken paste popping up in Michigan City. And people complain about that, but I tell people, they come here because when you travel, you buy chicken, and they know exactly where you're coming from by your zip code and your credit card. And so, they know there's a lot of people here who buy chicken, so that's why they're here. And hopefully, they can make money and stay around for a while. But again, two great additions to our community and new choices. Cleveland, a great family project. Been here forever, twenty, thirty-plus years. New expansion on the east side. We're excited that this is what this will do for the east side. And if you have not been there lately, they did a wonderful job. They make this place cleaned up and really a lot of great options in there. Other great projects, Mid Supply Plumbing Company. Been here for a long time. They really knocked down an old building and built a new one. Dalton Enterprise out of Connecticut, they glue for tiles. And FS Passion is a contractor and engineering company out of Chicago that moved their office here a year ago. Downtown, over the past five years, we'd say a minimum over three million dollars in private investment. And again, a lot of new choices, sushi, coffee, Italian. But downtown is changing. If you haven't been there lately, I tell people, when I came here twelve years ago, there was plywood and grass in the streets. It's not the same anymore. Other projects in process. The left is a wine bar, the Old Harmony Bar, could be a wine club. They were supposed to open in January. They hit some snags when they discovered that the water line or sewer line wasn't connected, so they're trying to get that fixed right now. Old building, you find stuff you shouldn't find. The building in the middle, again, they're probably six months behind. Again, environmental issues in the building. They've had to get some letters, some items, get it cleaned up first. So, they went through that process right now, get the building cleaned up. But the goal is to punch some holes in that building and make it kind of a nice local pizza and different types of eateries in the downtown. And the building on the right is going to be a Mediterranean takeout near the hair salon. So, they should be opening here this summer. DME, been here for twenty years. They're building a brand-new building. If you haven't driven there lately, in the Woodrow Fitness Park, it's probably almost finished, but a lot of steel and eighty jobs in that new projects. Saigon City, if you haven't been on two twelve across from the airport, if you love Vietnamese food, great choice. And they've done a heck of a job with that old bar. The old bar has completely been transformed. Behind the high school, if you've not been up there lately, it's probably a five or six building under construction, and they're selling fast. They're actually billing on spec, so that's the kind of market they're heading right now over there. Beachwood Subdivision is probably four or five already up. This is behind Beachwalk. These are higher-end homes, and again, they're selling as they're building, so great market for Michigan City. This continues to go up. Drive-by Downtown, the garage is fully completed. We should have it open by the end of next month, and they're hoping to top out the twelve stories by the end of summer. So, the goal is to have this building completed by the end of March of twenty-six. Solar, we continue to work with these developers to get them off the ground. They're having a vision with their financials to get it to the end of the line, so we're hoping to get them in ground by fall. Coming up, the line, luxury townhomes, if you've driven on Highway twelve lately by St. Andrews or the church, there's a bunch of land being cleared, so this is already broke wrong. Tryon Meadows, these are a hundred and twenty-eight, well, roughly two hundred units, apartments, townhomes and single-family off Tryon Road. This was a break run this fall. They're going through the bonding process to get their bond and financials up to speed. This project is across from the casino. We are a little behind due to, again, environmental, that site is a little dirty, so we've taken a lot of fill out of the site and hopefully get it cleaned up and started this fall. But looking at three hundred apartments for downtown in the future, and so that's gonna bring almost seven people downtown. They have a lot of family-style apartments, two and three bedrooms in this project. This, we're hoping to get started this summer. One of the things we're being asked for is let us smaller office slash warehouses, which we don't have in Michigan City. And so, they're looking to build about twelve of these in Cleveland Boulevard, and so there's already a market for this. Future, we announced about two months ago, preferred developer for Fifth and Pine. The goal is to have the urban supermarket there in the future, possible hotel, over five hundred apartments and possible senior living on that site. Great site plan for what we're looking for, not too high, not too much steel or glass. We're trying to keep that rural midwestern look, so we're always trying to verify if I'm too much steel and glass. Airport expansion, this has been going on for like four years now, so every year it has changes, but the goal is to have it finished in the next three or four years. So, in the future, you'll be driving under the runway on Michigan Boulevard. So, every year, they get dollars from the feds to make that happen. So, we're working on that, and it's probably another five years to see the completion. This Federals Alley, all inclusive playground, we're almost there. We raised over four million dollars, so we're trying to get to the finish line for another billion dollars. This would be a great playground for all of the residents in Indiana. There's nothing like this in Indiana right now. So, we're excited about this playground, building more, bringing more families here and increasing their quality of life. I mentioned things happening outside the city that's gonna affect us. Looking at roughly over four thousand jobs in the next five years, between twenty minutes of Michigan City, and these are all high-tech jobs for the most part. And so, we are hoping we can attract at least half of those people moving to this project. And so, the goal is to hopefully get them to Michigan City, or at least half of Michigan City, hands to C E L. at the new housing development, and hopefully bring some more families into the school system in the future. And for those of you who haven't traveled to South Bend lately, there's four buildings being built out there on the Amazon site. The highway is in one lane, and there's a bunch of cranes out there, so they're hoping to have this finished by, I guess, by the end of next year. So, a lot of construction going on right now. Last year, the governor, Senator Mo U, worked with the prison. We continue to work with your preferred site developer and planners. The goal is what's gonna happen there, so we know that's over a hundred acres. We know there's a lot of land and also a lot of concrete and steel, so how do you make something out of that? So, a lot of ideas by the committee, trying to vet the ideas, but also figure out, you know, how can we make this happen within the next ten years? Because, you know, the first five years, you're not gonna see much happen. You gotta go over there and see what's in the ground, and hopefully, we can make some things happen, you know, within the first five years. The Nippsco site continues a lot of conversation. Nippsco still haven't given us much direction. There's a lot of gossips out there, but I can't tell you much because they haven't told us much. I know they, you know, they said they want to give it up or maybe a portion. We don't know yet, so. And working with the Opera Grants, neighborhood, small business training, dollars. We gave over several thousand dollars last year to small business, and we're working this year to give away a minus for neighborhoods, for the community, help improve our neighborhoods. In terms of opportunity for real estate, Market Mall, again, going through new ownership. We have an investor developer who has bought the site, so we'll be hearing more from them here soon on what they want to do on this project. We had somebody buy it a year and a half ago who kind of settled it, so somebody's supposed to buy it again, so. And of course, the city is spending over four million dollars on the southeast portion of Highway twenty to bring water and sewer to these areas. These are industrial parks. We're getting a lot of calls right now from smaller companies, smaller than a hundred thousand square feet, two hundred thousand square feet, because a lot of people want to be close to what's happening in Yucala, the Samsung plant and the Amazon plant. And so, they don't want to be out there. They want to be here. So, we get calls all the time on buildings, and so the goal is to hopefully build some new buildings here in the next three or four years and have some new industrial jobs in the community. With that, thankful for, you know, you guys invite me here every year to give you an update, open for any questions. I'll try to answer the best amount I can, but schools have been a great partner. We work closely with your high school, A K Smith, and always trying to make sure we're involved with what's happening with your school system. I'm very happy you guys have began the ambassador program. We get, people make things at the school all the time, and so we have to kind of call you guys, say, what's going on, and fix that message. So, by having that, I think that's been proactive and can really help us to get the word out. But I also invite those people to be at certain locations when we have events, so they can be able to share what's happening in the schools, so.
I was just gonna mention the ambassador program, hopefully a member of your team partakes because what you do here to present the community and sell the community is so important, and the school system is one of those few pillars that, you know, when someone's looking to move to a community, is it safe? How are the schools? And what do the jobs look like? As we exchange good information, it'll be amazing to have that connection between our teams, so. Next one I just wanted to mention quickly is you went through a lot of building programs there, but I think almost the most exciting part of that is the housing capacity we're adding. And not only, I think I lost count, over a thousand units of new housing, which...
Actually, two thousand.
Two thousand, okay, so like I said, I lost count, but...
It's for a city that hasn't built in fifty years.
Exactly.
It's a boomtown because the first one was, of course, the one by the high school that broke wrong, and then after that, it just started popping out.
Yeah, and right on that same track, to be able to add population in an era where property tax caps are happening and all the other cuts downstate are happening, so funding is less and less for a city, for a school system, for a police department, you name it. To be able to add population helps to replenish some of those funds, so we look forward to that. It also means that potentially people who are in situations of housing have now other options, so they can move up in the world, other people can move down in the world, and other people can move in. So, it gives more housing flexibility to the community as well, I know.
They move up and they stay here, depending on the pace. They move up and they move out.
Yep, exactly, exactly. So, very exciting to see, for the first time in my lifetime, this much housing being added to the community. So, that's amazing. We look forward to new residents, old residents, and everyone else in between.
Thank you, Mr. Hulse. I think we just need to reiterate the need, all this housing probably need for a lot more policemen. No, thank you. See, next, we are weapons detection, Bruce Hoffman.
Thank you. And the system that we're referring to tonight is the Open Gate. It's back in the back of the room. So, this is basically what this addresses this evening. A little bit about Cheia. So, Cheia, it's pronounced C-E-I-H-A. It's an Italian company. All of our equipment is built in Italy. We got a lot of engineers, really good engineers in Italy. But Cheia's been in the weapons detection business for over sixty years. They're in ninety-five percent of the airports worldwide. We hold contracts with Homeland Security, TSA. We protect the president and the White House, residents, the Capitol Building, even over in the Vatican and the Pope. So, Cheia's been doing this for a very long time. The difference is the technology totally changed in twenty twenty-one when we came out of COVID. Prior to COVID, the technology wasn't available for children to come into school, leave pretty much everything in their backpack and walk through. Back prior to twenty twenty-one, everyone had to empty their pockets. The bags needed to be searched, just like at the airport. But today, we have this technology available, and that's why schools are so interested in it. So, what does the Open Gate offer to schools other than just keeping the kids safe? And that's ultimately what we're trying to do here, keep the kids safe, keep the faculty, the visitors, the staff, keep the weapons out. Typically, what we think about is mass casualty events, guns with magazines that can shoot off multiple rounds. We want to keep the guns out of the schools. But at the same time, we want to get the kids in quickly and safely. So, one of the things that our systems do offer is fast screening. Kids walk right through our system. If it sets off the alarm, they go through secondary screening. But ultimately, the goal is the kids come in, they shouldn't have to have their backpacks searched, their pockets searched, unless it alerts on a weapon. Great thing about our system is it's wire-free. If you look at the system in the back, there's no wires, so they're not tethered by wires. They operate on batteries, lithium-ion batteries. Usually, you can get about ten hours of runtime off the batteries, so they're very easy. You can get a, you know, a lot of schools will go a couple days even without recharging the batteries. You can also plug them in through an AC adapter into the wall. But I will tell you, I've been to schools throughout the country. The majority of schools take advantage of the batteries because it makes it easy to carry around and, again, not tethered to any wires. They're extremely versatile. This system can protect kids on a Friday morning entering a high school, and you can carry them out to the football stadium in the evening. Same system, doesn't need any alterations, any weatherproofing, same system, indoor and outdoor. They're lightweight. They only weigh twenty-five pounds apiece, and they have handles, so they're easy, very easy to pick up and carry to wherever you need them on the school grounds. Applications, you'll see our systems in stadiums, arenas, and ballparks. I know we were at the Super Bowl. We were at the NCAA Final Four. You'll see us at NFL, Major League Baseball. We were just at the Masters and the Indy Five Hundred. So, our systems, you'll see them at large venues where a lot of people want to stay safe, but they want to get them in quickly, and we do that very well. It's all about the discrimination, really focused on the weapons, the subcompact compacts, large-frame weapons, keeping those out, the large knives, like the hunting knives, eight-inch blades, but allowing things to get in, like my cellphone, the chargers, the AC adapters, the Stanley thermoses that are so important with the kids, lots of wires, air tags. There's a lot of things that can get in in a student's backpack, but again, we're keeping out the weapons. You have basically two pillars that make up a system in a left... You have basically two pillars that make up a system, and a left and a right. It does set off an alarm if it, if it alerts. It has sunlight protection, again, batteries that we spoke about, but it is a two-pillar system, so that would be one complete system right there that you see in the back. It is set with a column orientation. A lot of people ask, well, how, why can I, I set them apart? Typically, anywhere between 28 and about 34 inches wide is the standard width. One person at a time. You can't walk a whole family through it once, so it's one person at a time, single file through the system. We have accessories, so again, you'll see these at football games, on a Saturday at a college football stadium. They have them where I, my college is back at Ohio State. But they operate in pouring down rain, sleet, wind. They do a very good job, but we do offer accessories, depending on what environment that you're using them in. Device management, whoever's operating and authorized to operate the system can operate it right off their phone, from an app that you download, either from the app, Apple or Android shop. It's totally secure. Kids can't get all of the app downloaded on the phone and get control of their systems. But the nice thing about the system, not only do you buy the outright and the hardware outright, it's not a lease program, it's, you buy it, it's yours, but there are no subscription fees that come with it. It's once you get the app, gives you full control of the system, any updates that happen along the way, again, at no charge, okay? We do offer, though, a cloud-based system. If the district decided if you had a larger deployment, multiple buildings, multiple units, you could get the cloud-based management system that allows you to push all the settings onto the devices and pull all the analytics back as far as number of students that went through in the morning, your alarm rates. So if you had one school that's under 5% alarm rate, and you had another school that's maybe in the 20s, it would alarm you and you might want to go see, maybe there's some settings or something that's wrong there. Again, this that you see on the screen there is what it would look like on the phone. Basically tells the user batteries, so the two yellows mean that those batteries are getting low and need to be recharged soon. The gray at the bottom, I'm talking about the four circles at the bottom, the gray means it's missing a battery, and the green means it's fully charged and ready to go. It also tells you the distance, so you're not having to guess how far apart they are. Again, somewhere between 28 and 34 inches wide, and the green up top says it's ready to go, ready to operate. And with that, any questions?
Just one question, speaking of, thinking about the kids coming to school, how many students can we get through in so many amount of time?
That's a great question. So for morning entry, typically from the time the doors unlock till the bell ring, we normally experience anywhere between 15 to 20 minutes is what we see. Now, it may be different in your district. The number to work with is 300 kids every 15 minutes. So if you, let's say, had 600 kids that you're trying to get in to one doorway or multiple doorways within 15 to 20 minutes, 600, you'd need two devices, two units, okay? So 300 students every 15 minutes is what you should, you need one, one unit.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
You said you only phone one person at a time can go through?
Yeah, it's single file, and they walk through very quickly. It's not a stop-go, stop-go. It's, it's really just like those that entered into the room today, but you walk through a single file. Two people cannot walk through the system at the same time, is what I meant. Obviously, if two people walk through at the same time, sets off an alarm. You have to do secondary screening on both those individuals. Versus if you go through one at a time, you know exactly where the alarm is with that person, okay?
Thank God, I've seen them not only just today, but in other venues where people are going through one at a time. People get through pretty quickly.
They sure do.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
If I can add some, some more context, and, and thank you for the presentation. The whole plan or the thought of the district purchasing the weapons detection system relates back to last fall when we put out a survey to all constituents, students, staff, and parents, and overwhelmingly, there was support for the district to move forward with weapons detection. For us, it was as a committee at the district level and several of our building principals, an opportunity to study the efficacy of using the weapons detection system in addition to what we already do to keep our schools and students safe. So one of the things that it's very clear we need to communicate and has been communicated to us is that these systems are not the be-all, end-all. They are another layer of protection for our staff and students in the building. So if I put it to the parent test, and if my kids walk through a building that has a system that's in place, I feel a lot better. So I know that, once again, looking at the overwhelming evidence and numbers that our parents and our staff members supported having these systems in place, that we spent the last several months seeing how we could operationalize them, but then also as a committee, looking at how other districts are using the devices. So we do definitely plan to have devices in our secondary buildings next fall. What that looks like will be discussed at a district and then at a building level as well, because it's going to involve not only the administrators in the building, if we have SROs in the building, but of course, our staff. They're going to need to be involved and educated on how the systems work as well. But once again, this is an added layer of security for the building in addition to the students who are there and, and the staff, because our students generally are our best alarms when it comes to keeping our building safe, and our parents. And then also, with those systems in place, I want to also highlight that we're looking at getting at least 10 systems and that those, the proceeds from the bond that the board approved last August are what's being used to fund these initial devices. So I wanted to make that clear as well.
Um, with the, since we're buying the product outright, and it, it, does customer service come along with that?
Yes, it does.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep, and the warranty's two years, just letting you know.
All right, next we go on to our business portion of the meeting. Number one, first items, title grants 2025, 2026. This is Bill Houser.
Thank you, Mr. Cordley. Tonight, I'm asking the board's approval for the acceptance of the Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV application and the use of the funds. The funds are used to pay for overall academic improvement, leadership development, instructional support for specialized student groups, support summer school, parent involvement activities, leadership development. It also requires coordination to take place between the non-public schools for Title I, for all title services, and then also for coordination with Head Start that we do every year, and the MOUs for Head Start were included in your packet. Any questions about the grants?
Any questions? How would the board like to proceed? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Senior for discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Mrs. Dida passes. Thank you all, thank you, Mrs. Bill Houser. Next, Handbook and Code of Conduct revisions, Mrs. Bill Houser.
Thank you. In tonight's board packet, you received revised, revised versions of the student handbook and code of responsible behavior for the 25, 26 school year. Through that, you can see the red line marks and the suggested changes from the administration, administrative teams with the buildings and myself. Some of the, just a quick summary, the removal of the summer EBT Sunbucks program, and then in the high school handbook, revisions to the building tardy policy, update with the clubs that are offered, the device policy in alignment with the number of courses on the block schedule. And then the Little Wolves handbook was totally revised, and it includes a behavior success plan to support students with Tier 2 supports and interventions. Fee changes for half-day from $80 to $100 to subsidize lost funding from the on-my-way pre-K cap that's currently in, at the state level. And then the addition of late pickup fees for students that aren't picked up at the, following the timelines. And then also starting an enrollment contract to really allow the preschool to develop a relationship with the families right from the get-go and really understand supports and needs for well-rounded experience.
Thank you, any questions?
Just a quick one, the Sunbucks EBT discontinuation, that was the program that the state of Indiana decided to not accept funds for and cut off? So that's not a local thing, that's a state-level thing, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Senior for further questions, how would the board like to proceed?
Move to approve.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Senior for discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Mrs. Dida passes. Thank you all, thank you, Mrs. Bill Houser. Next, Niola, first reading, Mr. Kaminski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, first reading, if you have any questions, please email me or call me. I just want the board to be patient, because as the USDOE goes through many, many changes, Office of Civil Rights and so forth, there's going to be a lot of policies that are going to have to change because of, of policies that are changing from the White House on down. So be patient as we bring these to you, and we, we are trying to hold some back that we know are going to change, so we're not double-dipping. But if you have any questions, please call me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Neiman Elementary School Roofing Maintenance Project Award Recommendation, Mr. McGuire.
Good evening, as part of your board packet was the bid award recommendation for the Neiman roof. With me tonight, I have Mr. Steve Hobby, who's the president of Paladin, and show of his support, and certainly appreciate his collaboration, his patience as we moved through this project. We've been working on this for quite some time, so we're excited to kind of move this to the next step. One thing I do want to point out as part of those recommendations is we are under what Skillman has estimated for the project, so we're very pleased with the competition and those that had submitted some, the bids. And Paladin has received a grant to fund about half of the project. So the number that you see there is, we'll, we'll be responsible for about a half of that, so. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, glad to hear we're under. How would the board like to proceed?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Senior for further discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Mrs. Dida passes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. McGuire. And our last piece of business is the memorandum of understanding between MCAS and MCESP. Mrs. Painter.
Hi, thank you, good evening. Tonight, we are asking the board to approve an MOU between MCAS and the Michigan City Educational Support Professionals for Summer School Classification and Pay. Under the collective bargaining agreement with MCAS and MCESP, it outlines two categories. Category 1, which is our building-level secretarial and administrative positions, such as the middle school registrar and secretaries. And category 2 is our building-level instructional support, IAs, paras, and in-house supervisors. The MOU outlines that any staff member that is currently classified as a category 1 secretary will be compensated at their current years of service and will align with the positions listed in the appendix. So as an example, if a classification C staff member is placed in a summer school secretarial position, they will be paid at the classification of the school year counterpart position. Additionally, a category 2 employee that is placed in a summer school category 1 position will be compensated at their current years of service, and again, it'll align with the school year's counterpart position. So we're asking your approval of this MOU tonight.
Thank you, any questions by the board?
Is this a continuation of what we've done in the past, or is there any?
No, this is something we, something new, we've never done it before. Usually, they're just paid at their current rate of pay.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Senior for further questions, how would the board like to proceed?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Senior for discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. Thank you, Mrs. Painter. Now, we have this part of board statements or issues requiring action prior to the next board meeting. Any statements by any board members?
A few quick mentions tonight. Went out to Ames Field this week for the Barker Water Rocket Competition, which is always amazing, their 10th year doing that. They bring in groups from outside the school system. This is essentially a year-long competition within our schools, where you start at the classroom levels and teams, and they, they go through and they qualify. And then finally, it culminates at Ames with almost a championship series. And Amy Hammond and the STEM program there at Barker, and then feeding down into all the elementaries, does such an amazing job with that program. They put on such a good show. And in connection with that, also want to mention the progress at Ames with the updates we're doing there to continue the life of Ames Field. Look amazing, just the power washing that they've done on the concrete at Ames Field. It looks like all-new concrete, so that's coming along very nicely for those who haven't seen. Again, continuing, I see a few of, of our, our people here tonight, but continue to get those applications in for the ambassador program. It's not just for connected people who are in institutions. We want people to experience the MCAS from the inside. It's an amazing program, we're super excited about it. The applications are on, educate MC. So go to the website, check it out, read up on it. We'd love to have as many applicants as possible. This will also be an annual program, so even if you can't make it this year, if you don't get chosen this year, continue to apply, continue to show that interest, because we want as good a community relations and information out there as we can have about the school system. The final thing is, as we, we end up this year and graduation coming up fairly, very soon, congratulations to the class of 2025. I, I'm sure Wendell will continue Barbara's tradition of, of the amazing statistics and achievements of our class. I won't spoil any of that yet. I'll let him save that for his big day. But we've got a lot of amazing kids graduating to do amazing things in the future, and a lot of kids getting ready to change levels, you know, whether that's enrolling in kindergarten or preschool, or going from elementary to middle, or whatever that might be. A lot of transition years happening. And I also just want to mention, you know, as we evaluate those kids and, you know, they get report cards and come home and everything, the talk is, is happening around the state of starting school grades again. And I really want to mention this for the community to understand. With school grading, i- it's amazing, because when we do that, we do not take into account where kids start from. We have these goals, we have these achievement levels, and we don't look at where they're starting the race. We only look at where they're finishing the race. And, you know, if you were to take me out and evaluate me and my ability to run and, and put Usain Bolt in the lane next to me, it, it's not a very good evaluation for either one of us. And, and education's the same way. We, we take kids where they come in at, and, and we educate them to the level we're able to get them to. So keep in mind, as people talk about successful school systems, failing school systems, and they throw around these labels, you have to understand that we get kids where they are in time, and we have to bring them from those levels, whatever those are, to wherever we can get them to. So keep, keep those things in mind as you hear those phrases going around, and, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gresham, anybody else? All right, I'll wrap it up. Guys got about another 20 minutes with me. No, as we come to close it this year, Dr. McCullough, again, thank you for what you've done. I mean, you're one, you're in. We started this process with you as our superintendent last year, and now we're here at the end. We've still got three more days before it's completely over, but when you're in, and great job making sure that we continue to move forward with that. Also, to the, the rest of your cabinet and the staff, students in our community, good job on a great school year. You know, you, often you hear of other problems and issues, and again, we're not perfect, but as you, we haven't made the news yet, so we're doing- but as you, we haven't made the news yet, so we're doing pretty good, so again, thank you all. It's the summertime, this is the time where I'm in the news, you all are good, okay? But keeping with that theme, Dr. McCollum, as we, as you talked about some of the fruits of early college accomplishments, another, another thing that you add to your lapel, because that was one of the programs started when you were at the high school, so as you can see the correlation of you being a high school principal at one time and coming back home, I remember sitting in your living room with that discussion to get you back here, I won't let you, I got a story about that too, so, all right. But you coming back and, you know, that program, now we're starting to see some of the fruits of that year in year on, so again, thank you for that. As Mr. Holtz mentioned, you know, talked about the different investments in housing, and I, again, I think we should all be excited, because not only is that good for the community, but that's good for our school system, as people come here to live and raise families. That means more kids are now coming back to us, and we'll get back to those numbers that we really want to be at, but also, it gives kids the opportunity to, um, um, get the proper education that we do give kids. Again, I know we're not perfect, but I had the opportunity to talk to some people yesterday that were involved in actually, they actually, the general counsel for Department of Education at one point under Glenda Ritz actually talked about some of the things we've done good and moving forward, so again, I don't care what these letter grades, when other, whatever you hear, we have a good thing going here, so let's continue to keep that going. Community input, as you can hear Dr. McCollum talk about, getting input from parents when it comes to the weapons detection, but then also, when you think about our strategic planning, the input that's been put in, and ambassador program that now is moving forward, I think it's something to, to say, the, the credit to give to where we're going, that yes, you know, we are going forward, but also, we have to give it up to our community also for their input and continue to make us move that, move forward. If, one of my last things, I want to talk about Michigan City Midnight Hoops, I actually have a quick announcement about that. If you guys are not familiar with Midnight Basketball is what it's called, everybody think it was a basketball program, but it was also, it was all, it was really a, a anti-crime program. It's about making sure that kids or young adults are in a safe environment, use basketball for that, but all, but it's not all about basketball, there are vendors and there's workshops and other educational and things that they get to learn, not only about, you know, they're not just playing basketball, but it's about getting jobs, it's about, you know, knowing about your health, employment, so forth. So as Mr. Holtz was here, Economic Development has a neighborhood leadership program that has actually come about in, some of the kids, well, I won't say kid, they're kids to me, but they're young, young adults, I would call them, actually wanted to get Midnight Basketball back rolling, and I told them, like, there's been groups of us, adults, seasoned adults, I guess I can call myself a seasoned adult now, have talked about it, but here these young minds came, and we're actually moving forward with it and getting it going again. So that will start in July, the last, actually, yeah, the last four weeks of July, we'll have, every Sunday we'll have the games going on, but if anybody's interested in volunteering and being a player on June twenty-ninth from six-thirty to nine PM at the Michigan City YMCA, you can, we'll have a combine, you can register there, or you can register online. We have a flyer that has a QR code on it, I will post it on my Michigan City School Board page, and you'll also see it on MCPD's Facebook page too, where volunteers and players can sign up. We'll have two sections, thirteen to fifteen-year-olds will play from probably about seven to like nine, seven-thirty to nineish, and then sixteen to twenty-five will play from nine to midnight, and it's co-ed, so please show up, there is a ten-dollar fee, player fee, but each player will get their own jersey, so that's really to pay for the jerseys, it's not about charging anybody to pay, it's just to pay for the jerseys. So I hope people come out and participate, but also get some volunteers and just understand the importance of a summer program like that, makes it a lot easier on my job, so please volunteer. That is it for me. Anybody else? No? Dr. McCollum, anything else?
Yes, so as a reminder, the graduation ceremony is the official end of the year. You highlighted being in the high school, even though the students are not there this week or next week, yeah, we still have several that are, are getting work done, so want to make sure we get to next Sunday and have a great ceremony to send our twenty-twenty-five students out into the world, and I will say, it's awesome that we're at this point, we talked about it a couple years ago when we started the strategic planning process, about how the city was full of energy, and there was a lot of new construction and homes that were going to be built over the next several years, and now you're starting to see that, or you do see it now with the city, and then the school system, we are in place right now to where we can say, when we come back to this meeting at the end of next year, and Kevin can attest to that, that there's going to be things that are changing in our system as well, for the better. So fifty years plus that there hasn't been new communities built in the city, I mean, our high school is over fifty years old, it needs a lot of TLC, so you'll start seeing changes not only there, but in several of our other buildings, so this is an exciting time, and it's really important that the community engage in this process. We can't put it out there enough to say that we want your input, we want your support. It's hard to receive back that people are going to say they didn't know, this is one of those opportunities where we're not going to let you say you didn't know, because we are putting it out there that we want their support, and I know you all are as well. So over the next several months, there's going to be changes that are happening within our district for the better, for the future, so that our students fifteen, twenty years from now will walk into buildings that are meeting the needs of whatever their educational programs or processes are. So very exciting times, and I can't wait to see what they look like, starting first, next week, our seniors, make sure you are here, and, and get everything that you need to get done, so that's all I have for tonight.
Anybody else from the cabinet want to say anything? No? Very good. New administrators, could you guys stay after? I'd like a picture with you all if that's possible. Thank you. If that's it, and see you all next month, thank you.